This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We just got finished with executive session and we do have some action. Actually, before we do that, we're going to start like every meeting with a prayer and a pledge. Sorry, Mr. Martinez. You got it.
Stand and pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we love you. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here today and represent our community. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your guidance. We come to you today asking for wisdom and understanding. Please fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect our students, teachers, and community. Lord, we pray tonight for a member of our family, for Trish and her family. We know there is power in prayer and we ask that you provide them the strength to endure your will. We know nothing can separate us from your steadfast love. Please lift them up and look after them. Pleased are our words and actions tonight to always reflect your message and we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Okay. Thank you for that, Aaron. We do, like I said, have some action coming out of executive session, one involving personnel. May I entertain a motion on that?
Mr. President, at our meeting on October 21st, 2019, this board proposed the termination of bilingual teacher Myra Escobedo for abandonment of her employment contract. She requested a hearing on her proposed termination, but on January 2nd, 2020, she withdrew that request. At this time, all deadlines have passed. I move that the district terminate the employment contract of Myra Escobedo effective immediately.
Thank you, Mrs. Mason. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it and the motion passes. Next, we have a consideration of approving the superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's contract?
I move to approve the superintendent's contract.
Second.
Okay. Everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the ayes have it and the motion carries. Good deal. Moving on now to special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our January District Students of the Month. Our Elementary Student of the Month is Jacorian Kennedy, a first grade student at Austin Elementary School. And our Secondary Student of the Month is Nakira Collins, a sixth grade student at Bolter Middle School. And at this time, would you please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students?
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected based on 12 Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. These qualities lead to a successful student outcome both in and outside of the classroom. We would like to recognize Jacorian Kennedy, a first grade student at Austin Elementary, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Jacorian exhibits Tyler ISD's learner profile characteristic of being a reader and writer. According to the MAP fluency test, he exceeds grade level expectations in phonological awareness and word recognition.
I get like high scores. I'm focusing and I know every word. I keep my eyes on the computer every time.
Jacorian says staying focused on class assignments helps him succeed and become a better student.
I like to be a good student and that's how I'm going to be.
And he believes all students can be successful if they try their best every day.
I try to get the high score. I always try. Practice makes perfect.
Our Secondary Student of the Month is Nakira Collins, a sixth grade student at Bolter Middle School. Nakira is a lifelong learner and takes her education seriously. She spends a lot of her time reading after finishing class assignments.
Sometimes I will read nonfiction or comment art graphic novels, sometimes chapter books.
Nakira says she also enjoys math and likes working with other classmates to find solutions to complicated problems.
We're learning about ratios and rates. I get my friend that helps me if I need help and I help her when she need help.
Nakira's teachers say she is a hardworking, focused, and respectful student. When she faces challenges in a subject, she has a good attitude and keeps working until she succeeds.
Don't let anybody distract you. Always do your work, turn in on time, and have good friends.
In Tyler ISD, we are committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and display of the Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD TV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System.
Board members, I would like to introduce you now to Jacorian Kennedy, our Elementary Student of the Month. Jacorian, will you please come forward? And we would also like to congratulate our Secondary Student of the Month, Nakira Collins. Nakira, will you please come forward? And we'd also like the parents of both of our students of the month to stand so that we can give y'all a round of applause as well. At this time, we would like to congratulate Elizabeth Boynton, a senior at Robert E. Lee High School, who has been selected to march in the Macy's Great American Marching Band in New York City. She was one of five students selected. And Elizabeth, please come forward. What an amazing experience. We're going to continue with our student recognitions tonight. We're proud to recognize Hubbard Middle School students Kate Thomas and Emily Parker. These two ladies led their fellow Huskies in collecting 3,126 pairs of socks for the St. Paul Children's Foundation. So Kate and Emily, I know you're all the way in the back. Come on down, meet the board. We are also proud of Griffin Elementary student Juan Chapa for taking the initiative to clean up around the playground at recess time at his campus. He even organized a group of students to join him and now the campus has a cleanup club that is being formed. So Juan, come on down. And tonight, we celebrate our district teacher of the month, Sandra Fillmore, a fifth grade teacher at Bell Elementary School. Ms. Fillmore devotes her time to ensure successful student outcomes for all of her students. She tutors two days a week with one of those days being a Friday after school. A day when most people are already ready for the weekend, of course. Ms. Fillmore is focused on meeting the needs of our students and she takes time to dig in deep and to data to differentiate their learning in her classroom. Ms. Fillmore, will you please come forward at this time? And lastly, we would like to recognize John Tyler Football Standout and former NFL football player Teddy Williams for his generosity in donating a bicycle to one boy and one girl at every Tyler ISD elementary campus before the Christmas break. So we want to thank you, Mr. Williams. Would you please come forward at this time? We're glad you're here. Oh, I love it. Thank you so much. And this concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
And we're moving on to public participation. I don't think we had anybody sign up, so shucks. Okay, approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December 5th workshop and the regular meeting held on December 16th?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to consider the approval of our annual audit for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
To all these other leadership Tyler folk, I want you all to know Mr. Tom Prothro was a member of the greatest class, Class Two.
Class Two was it.
That's it.
Is that in Roman numerals?
That was directed toward him. They haven't recorded this to you?
Well, good evening. I'm Tom Prothro with the accounting firm of Prothro Willhelme &amp; Company and we have completed this year's audit. To my left is, what is your name? Royce Reed, CPE. He's a first year on this engagement. And to my right, as you all know, is Bob Roseman, CPA, who this year participated in the engagement as the Quality Controller Reviewer, first time. So we appreciate both of their expertise. Wanted to thank Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Tessa Bjork, and Mary Russell, Executive Director of Financial Services. Together, they created this year's 159-page comprehensive annual financial report known as the CAFR. Preparing the CAFR requires a tremendous amount of hard work, long hours, and it's a very difficult task. They did an amazing job under significant time constraints. Thank you also to Director of Internal Audit Services, Jan Coker, for her role in facilitating the audit process. These three are a wonderful group of CPAs. Our audit team, led by Royce, recently met with the Audit Committee and submitted our audit report to them for their review and approval. Our overall audit consists of two parts. The first part is the Independent Auditor's Report. I am pleased to tell you we issued the highest level of report possible. We're also pleased to report we have no negative comments on any aspects of internal control. The second overall part is that we perform an audit in accordance with government audit standards and the Single Audit Act. We're pleased to tell you we have no negative comments related to federal programs, their compliance, major programs, or internal controls. In short, you've had a great year from our perspective. The unassigned fund balance in the general fund ended at $27.2 million, which follows the basic guidelines for an amount outlined by the Texas Education Agency rules. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. I know I served with Jan on the Audit Committee and worked with Mr. Roseman for a few years and it was always good hearing good news at the end of that. Does anybody have any questions for our auditors?
I don't have any questions, just one comment that when we met with them, they said that management was accessible and cooperative. There were one balance sheet change, didn't affect the cash position of the district, and we're very impressed. I think also, we almost had the advantage of a new team or a new firm in that we had so many new eyes looking at the district, which that's always helpful every once in a while to get a new set of eyes in. So all around, good experience.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Well, we certainly appreciate the time that y'all put into this and it is always good to have new sets of eyes on things because we don't want things getting stagnant. We always want, we want to be our best and we want you guys to help with that, so...
Well, you got a fresh look this year.
Yes.
And we appreciate being your external auditors. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate y'all and thank you, Jan. Having heard that report, do I have a motion to approve the annual audit for the 2018-2019 fiscal year?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, we have a few updates coming up, athletic, visual arts, and performing and competitive academics.
Mr. President, Washman, we do have your mid-year updates. Greg Priest, Director of Athletics, will be providing the athletic update, followed by VPA Director Sandy Newton and Competitive Academics Executive Director Gary Brown. Do not expect a video. We tried to curtail that. We'll give you a video at the end of the year for the highlights and we tried to condense it a little bit. We're going to have some brevity for y'all, so we'll present it and then if y'all have questions to ask these folks, you may. Coach Priest?
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Crawford. I want to thank you guys for letting me come and give our fall update. Kind of go through the slides here. On the first few slides, what I have is the fall, our fall achievements for football, volleyball, cross-country, and team tennis. And, you know, I think overall, we had a very successful fall. And, you know, with most, all the one team made the playoffs, so, you know, I think we're making good strides in the area. You know, Lee Football was able to make the playoffs this year, which they haven't been in the last, you know, last five years. So that was good to see. So we're, you know, in tennis, team tennis, you know, both teams were able to have strong finishes this year, so that was good. And Lee keeps advancing and doing well, so that was good to see. After all, after that, that, on the third page, I gave you the Lone Star Cup standings. We were right on track about where we were the, you know, last year. Six points for John Tyler, picking up two each for each sport as they both advanced in the playoffs. Tyler Lee has 10 points with Team Tennis picking up the majority of the points for us and volleyball and football picking up points, so it was good to see those. So both of them, you know, 92 out of 253 schools and then 53 out of 255. So, and those rankings are through team, they include Team Tennis, Cross-Country, Marching Band, Volleyball, Robotics, and Football. So, on the next page, I just wanted to give you the participation numbers for all of our sports or for volleyball and football. Volleyball is going to stay consistent. We're down a little bit in volleyball at Lee, but just a few numbers. I think they decided instead of carrying 15 kids this year, we tried to carry 12, so that affected some of our numbers. The John Tyler football numbers, they stay consistent. Those are low numbers. We're really trying to push to get those numbers up and by doing that in our middle school and getting those, getting a lot more participation from there. I'll show you those numbers here in just a second, but overall, those numbers are staying consistent. You know, we want to continue to increase participation in all of our sports, so we're trying to hold on to those. Here's the middle school participation numbers. I tried to give you the, comparing them to the last, you know, to 2018. Football numbers are down. They were down this year in seventh grade and more. That affected a lot. Our Three Lakes numbers were down a little bit. We just continuing to get in there and get our coaches in there to try to get those kids out. Our numbers at Bolter for eighth grade, you know, those were down a little bit, but our seventh grade numbers were up, so that's good. And so, you know, I think helping with our high school coaches, being able to get down and trying to work with those kids and getting into sixth grade athletics and doing those things and promoting those sports, that will really help us. But, you know, overall, our numbers are still okay, but I still would like to see a bigger participation in some of our sports. Volleyball is always going to stay about the same. I think the only thing that has kind of affected those is, you know, some years we carry a C-team. This year, we, you know, we did not carry C-teams on some of them, so that affected a little bit. And then just on update, you know, really proud of these two things. We got the baseball indoor, which will also be able to help with softball, golf, those sports being able to come in and use those. So John Tyler and Lee have been taking advantage of the, you know, with the cool weather and the rain that we've had, baseball's been able to get over and open up the indoor cages and so I'm excited about that. That thing, if you ever get a chance, please, please come by and check that thing out. It turned out really nice and so I think our kids will see a huge benefit from our spring sports. And then probably the thing that I am the most proud of that we have done, well, you know, the UIL has allowed us to dip down into elementary athletics. You know, the, when I first kind of came here, when I got here, the little dribblers, the numbers were just not there. And so with the UIL allowing us to do that, we decided we were going to make a run at it and try to get more kids involved in basketball and volleyball. And then we're going to eventually try to get into baseball and softball, but right now, we have, last weekend, we started basketball. And I know a few of you guys, Dr. Crawford tipped off the league over there at Moore, pulled out a great win, 38 to maybe 18, I think.
Lady Bears.
Lady Bears, yeah. So I did this at, Mr. Washman is coaching the team as well, but we have 440 kids participating, which was great. And I'll tell you, over there, I was at Moore the entire time. We've had each one of our assistant ADs that have been over at the other two sites and I'll tell you, it was, it's really great seeing people. We kept our, we kept the cost down and we've got a lot of kids involved and it's, it will, it is going to benefit us. You know, as I sat there and looked, there's a lot of sixth graders that are playing and I just, as I look out on that court, I was sitting there thinking, this, this was needed because these kids would be coming into seventh grade next year at this level. And so it's really going to help us. And as soon as we finish up this, we're getting into volleyball. And so, you know, it's going to take a few years, but if you can, if our high school coaches will take advantage of this, get down into, and get down and work with these kids, it is going to pay huge dividends for us and I'm just excited about this and just all the support from, just all the volunteers that have, that have been willing to coach our team, so that's been special for me. So that's the presentation and opening up to any questions you guys have.
What rationale would you have for a decrease at seventh grade in football, I mean, an increase in seventh grade, a decrease in eighth grade at some of our middle schools?
You talking about at Bolter? Well, you're, I think you're always going to lose numbers.
You have Bolter, you have Moore.
At Bolter, that's the smallest grade. I mean, that's the smallest numbers that they have at Bolter, so that is the smallest class they have, so I think that's a reason there. I think you're always going to have kids in seventh grade, they're going to try, you know, that are interested in playing football that first year. And then I think, you know, several of them are going to realize that that's not the sport for them, so you're always going to lose some from seventh to eighth grade. You know, there was one school that did pick up, Bolter did pick up some kids, so that was good to see. But, but I think that's kind of our major part of it is, you know, we want to try to do a better job of holding on to those kids, but, but I think as you get through it, I think most kids are going to find out that, you know, maybe football is not for them.
And then I guess the last comment, I'm glad to hear about little dribblers. My first teaching job was in Chandler, Texas, at Chandler Elementary, and that was a, little dribblers was a big thing in that area. And those students continued all the way up to... was a big thing in that area. And those students continued all the way up to high school in sports. So I'm glad to hear we started there.
Reverend Mason, athletics is no different than the classroom. You're not going to get better until adult behaviors change. And so, yeah, students may see that it's not for them, but it's our job as adults to make it for them, to make that experience something to where they do come back. Now, some kids just don't like the physicalness or contact of it, I get that. But that is no excuse, not with the investment that our board allows us to make into, into the programs. And we're conveying that to our coaches right now, that if you're going to coach in Tyler ISD, they need to have the very best experience. And the way to make that very best experience is certainly be encouraging at all times, but to have a practice plan, a game plan that encourages participation. Not standing on the sideline chewing on your mouthpiece. So in saying that, certainly the experience is something that we need to concentrate on. That's how you keep kids out. That you encourage them, you put your arm around them, you make sure that they're participating and getting the most out of what they're doing. So Greg and I have had that conversation quite a bit here in the last month and a half, and certainly I think that's, that's something we need to focus upon and be very prescriptive about as we go forward.
Well, and I will kind of add on to that. I mean, I think that's, you know, what I've tried to convey to our coaches. We get one opportunity to work with these kids and it has to be a great experience. It can't be an okay experience. It has to be a great experience because these kids can never go back and play athletics again for their middle school or their high school. And so it has to be great. And he's right, Dr. Crawford is right. We've got to improve our coaching in this area. You guys have afforded us to go down to the middle schools with our head coaches and we've got to make it great. And so that's going to be a big push for us to do those things and to get those numbers up, because it's going to benefit. But I think us, you know, with the little dribblers and those things for volleyball and basketball, I think those things are going to help. But it's only going to go as far as our coaches are willing to get invested in this opportunity because it is a huge opportunity for them. You know, it's, no matter how mad I want to do it, I need everybody else to want to do it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all Board for the opportunity for our field sports in the spring to have somewhere to go for, because the next two springs, we're going to be without facilities for our baseball and our softball and our golf folks. And the weather, you know as well as I do, is something that's not very cooperating this time of year, even though we play baseball and softball during that time and golf as well. So just to rehash what Coach Priest said, thank y'all for letting us do this a year ago, getting the old batting barn put up there outside of Mike Carter Field. It's going to, it's going to be utilized quite a bit the next couple of springs as we try to get the athletic facilities on the backend of the construction program ready for them. So yeah, spring of '21, we still won't have our athletic facilities ready to go, so this will be beneficial for us the next couple of years. Thank you.
And I'll say this, I'll just add on the elementary basketball. I am coaching and I do know for a fact, I've got kids on my team that I know they wouldn't be playing otherwise. And the looks on their faces when they pulled out a W last Saturday, it was priceless. I mean, it inspired me. I was excited. They were so excited about it. And I think it's getting them to understand, you know, athletics are so good, not only for your, for your body, but you know, you understand that process works and that preparation works and that having a plan works. And these are things we can, we can use in life. And just to be a part of a team, that's special. And so I appreciate us affording those kids that opportunity.
Yeah, you know, the, I've seen some Boys and Girls Club staff that are coaching some of these teams. So, you know, an extension of some of our relationships with Mentoring Alliance that kind of organically happened. And you know, the character, character building opportunities, you're right. There's no doubt about it. Everybody, you know, I think everybody wants to put a ball in a basket, but when it comes down to it, you know, are you accountable to your teammates? You show up at practice, the work ethic's there. Do you work as hard as you possibly can every time you do something? That transcends anything that, more than just sports. That's life. And we've been missing that. And it really is a neat thing to see the smile on the faces the other day of the two, you know, the athletic directors and the assistant, or the athletic director and the assistant athletic director, they get beat over the head quite a bit during the year. It's a tough job. But I saw two of them on Saturday and I know Coach Little was the same way. They had the biggest smiles on their faces last Saturday, being able to pull off this, this thing for Tyler. And it's, it's a neat deal and thank y'all for allowing us to use it. And we've got great facilities from our community. Why not use them? Instead of sitting dark on Saturdays, let's get in there and use those gems for, for all the right reasons. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments or questions for Greg? Okay, thanks Coach.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the visual and performing arts update.
Can't wait to see some of the videos later on in construction. As you're sitting down, I hope we have some shots of the perform, or the visual performing arts facilities that we're constructing at JT and Lee. That's, those are incredible that we're going to be able to provide for our arts. Our community is taking care of us, Sandy Newton.
Without a doubt.
What are we doing to give back to them as far as outcomes and performances go?
Some amazing performances. We've already had some over at Robert E. Lee and that revised, that renovated facility, so. And the John Tyler one that's coming up, they just don't know what's coming.
Yep. So you brought a little hardware with you.
I'm sorry?
Brought a little trophy with you there.
I did. It's in my presentation. You'll learn all about it. Board and Dr. Crawford, thank you very much for allowing me to give you this update this evening. Good evening. First, I would like to point out that we have incredible visual performing arts programs across Tyler ISD, which I'm sure you're well aware. So I want to point out some of the highlights to you of the accomplishments some of these programs have achieved. First of all, in the fall semester, both Robert E. Lee and JT received the highest marks of ones in their marching UIL contest. Robert E. Lee continued their legacy of having an award-winning program. And JT has done it for a second year in a row, so they advanced to the next level of competition and they performed very well there as well. Hubbard Middle School Band is growing and doing incredible things. They won commended winner for the 2019 Mark of Excellence National Win Band Honors Project. That's a mouthful. But bands from 38 states submitted entries for that recognition and Hubbard Middle School won it. It's a first time for Tyler ISD, so congratulations to them. Also, hot off the presses, for the MLK art competition, Tyler ISD had 240 entries and took first, second and third place in both elementary and middle school. Caldwell Elementary had two winners. They had first and third place in the elementary. And Rice Elementary took home second place. And then for this middle school competition, Bolter took home first place, Hubbard second and Moore third. So we performed very well with the MLK celebration. That's always a really great event. And then we also had two all-state band winners. Robert E. Lee has had one for several years, but JT has not had one since 2005. So they have an all-state band performer. So just to give you some perspective on that, only 2.6% of the students who auditioned to be in the all-state band actually make it. Roughly 67,000 students auditioned, so you can do the math on that one. So that's quite an accomplishment. And John Tyler also had an all-state dancer selected for the Texas Dance Educators Association. That's all brand new. Things are coming in regularly in the spring semester because that's competition central. In our extracurricular, oh, and also, speaking of this trophy, Tyler ISD was recognized as District of Distinction by the Texas Art Education Association. Over 1,000 districts were eligible for that award and 20 were awarded that recognition and Tyler ISD was one of that, one of those. I need to extend thanks to all of the educators and programs that are in fine arts in Tyler ISD. They work hard, they do an incredible job. This was for the visual arts and the visual arts teachers have taken on a lot of responsibilities, organized themselves and really pushed forward the programs which allowed us to receive this recognition. So kudos to our visual arts programs as well as all of the others. For theater, we had several wonderful performances this year. Of course, JT did Antigone. Robert E. Lee had Epic Proportions in Chicago. Three Lakes did Don't Let the EHS Confuse You. That was High School Musical at Three Lakes. And then Moore did Annie. And then of course Caldwell had two incredible performances. They did Beauty and the Beast Junior and Beauty and the Beast Full Length and they were both incredible. All of the performances were really, really great. And our visual, our performing programs work really hard to present to the community and invite the community in to see what we're achieving. In the month of December alone, Tyler ISD had 47 performances. And that's a short month for school because we're out for the holiday break. So just in that month, there were 47 performances, which is really something to be commended. We have some extra programs in our visual performing arts department that have really grown. They've thrived, they thrive. District Honors Choir is the first. This is the third years, third year of District Honors Choir. We have seen the numbers, numbers almost double every year. This year we have 70 students approximately in District Honors Choir. It is unique to Tyler ISD. There is not another elementary District Honors Choir in East Texas. We also had Empty Bowls. This was the inaugural year for Empty Bowls. The little background on what that program is, students from all over Tyler ISD made bowls. They don't, they used their excellence to help others. Those bowls all came together for a one-day event. We sold each bowl for $10 with the purchase of the bowl. They got a meal from El Charro on the Ridge. There was entertainment from our performance programs. But every penny went to the East Texas Food Bank for the Backpack Program. We raised over $4,000 in our inaugural year for Empty Bowls. It was a very, very large success. We also have all-city, middle school all-city band. So this is a program that's been around for a while, but it's, it's really thriving. It's growing. We have increased to a clinician both in the fall and the spring semester. So and just a snapshot of what that day is like for those students. Once they're selected for all-city band, they get to work with a clinician. This year it was Dr. Sarah Roberts from UT Tyler. So you're building a really good, strong program with a local, local institution. They work with her all day long. They learn four or five pieces of music. And then the community comes in, parents, whoever's interested, and comes and watches them perform four or five pieces of music that they learned that day. So it's a really great opportunity for kids. Looking forward as to what's coming up in the spring semester, of course, it's, there's lots of UIL competitions, concert inside reading, solo and ensemble, one-act play. Tyler ISD will also host the visual arts equivalent to UIL, which is Visual Arts Scholastic Event, which will be at Three Lakes. I'll be directing that one. We've had two incredible teachers that have stepped up to be the directors for junior base and team that will be held at Moore Middle School, so Tyler will host those. And then of course, we have Arts Fest that will be set on May 2nd. So I'm really excited about all of the great things that have happened and are continuing to happen in the visual performing arts for TISD. I thank Dr. Crawford for coming to Galveston to help receive the award for our District of Distinction. That was pretty impressive and I'm very grateful. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you for bringing that up, Sandy.
You bet.
I've grown up as a superintendent and resisted going to two playoff football games instead to go do that. That's important. And it's important because we do a good job with the arts. We really do. And sometimes that's kind of, in East Texas, that's kind of the forgotten thing on Friday Night Lights and whatnot. But arts, you know, Tyler ISD's made a commitment to the arts when, when the state, because of the recession prior to cut $5 billion or however many out of the, out of public ed, a lot of school systems decided to, that's where the first place they went and slashed was the arts. Y'all made a commitment not to do that. And so we have music and art teachers on every one of our elementary campuses. So some of the bigger things, we get accolades and we do the presentations, you don't see the day-to-day art experience that our kids are having in our, inside of our classrooms. So thank you for that. And then thank you for letting us transform Caldwell into a legitimate arts magnet. That's, that's, it's authentic. The culture over there is just certainly something that's outstanding. A very diverse school. I think it's a third, a third, a third. Actually, I think Bobby said we have, it's a little bit more than that. So can't have it more than a third, a third, a third.
[laughing]
But I'm saying, it's not, it's not, yeah, there you go, okay. So in saying that, you know, our commitment is to do that. We want to expand our opportunities in the arts as much, as much capacity as we can take on at times. And so very, very proud of everything that we've been able to do. Of course, George did a great job, Mr. Faber did. And once he retired, handed the reins over to Sandy and our people have done great. Hey, kudos to Larry Wade. I can't, I can't say enough about this, but Larry Wade and Sam LaBordis are two outstanding band directors at both high schools for doing what they've been doing with the marching and even the concert season as well. So a lot of great things happening in the arts and I love talking about that. And here's, here's the old, the old plug coach, I guess, talking about that. But I think the culture that we provide our students is just unmatched in East Texas, no doubt, unmatched. So y'all should be proud. I know certainly we are. Thank you so much.
Well, and I'll go beyond that. It's, there's momentum growing across the state about the arts that are happening in Tyler, Texas. The momentum is there. When I go to meetings across Texas and even beyond, I hear, oh, you're from Tyler. Good things happening there.
Yeah, the schools, the magnet schools located right in the middle of downtown. Downtown's cool again. And so very proud to have an anchor down there. So good stuff.
Someone who's had a behind-the-scenes look at at least a handful of those performances, I will say that the dedication from parents, but the staff, I mean, the staff is, I can't tell you how many extra hours they put in to pull off what we pulled off over at Caldwell. So definitely kudos to them and appreciate all their hard work for the kids that they do over there. I also want to say thanks for your work on the Empty Bowls. That was really a great community partnership and I know they're looking forward to doing it again next year and making it bigger and better for sure.
Thank you.
I have one brief question.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain briefly, because I've been asked this, so put it on record, the process that the district choir goes through to select the students at the elementary level?
District Honors Choir?
Yes.
We have a completely blind audition process. Each campus, and this is a loose explanation. Each campus director selects pre-auditions, their students. Then they go and audition in a blind audition. So what I mean by blind audition is it's live and they have screens set up. So the people that are trained musicians and vocalists who are auditioning the, and they're from the community, they could be from one of the colleges, they could be someone who's a practicing musician. Then hears them, they score them. There's no name, there's no school of origin, they're just given a number. And then once that happens, they go through and they score those sheets and whoever makes whatever the line of cutoff is for the scores, that's who then makes it into the choir. It's completely blind. We don't know where anybody comes from.
And all schools got given the opportunity to?
Every single school had students audition for District Honors Choir.
Thank you.
I was actually in District Honors Choir in the fifth grade and they-
Imagine that.
Yeah, the song we sang, it was, looking back, it was kind of funny that public school elementary kids, it was "What Shall We Do With A Drunken Sailor."
Oh, that's interesting.
I don't know, you know. It was the eighties.
Brother Washman, I was in all-city middle school band.
Oh, were you? Congratulations.
Two consecutive years.
I think now we know why we stopped doing District Honors Choir 20 years ago.
Right. Well, no, you know, if you give a kid the right equipment and the right facilities and the right coaching, you know, they will impress you. And I think- And I think, I don't care if it's on the athletic field or in the arts, if you provide them with the resources and especially good thoughtful coaching, you can really draw out some amazing stuff from all of these kids. And it's fun to see our arts, you know, thriving, and I'm proud of that. So, thank you for all you do.
Oh, well, thank you. And that goes for the teachers too. When you give them the right tools and the right coaching, you see great things. So, I thank you for allowing us to do that.
Just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do all of the middle schools have an opportunity to host these events?
Yes. The only reason those particular campuses were chosen this year, Moore has hosted Junior Vase and Team for a very long time. And so, when the reins were handed over to us for Moore to host, for us to host those, since teachers from all over the, all over East Texas will come here for that competition, we wanted to minimize the confusion for the first year because they have a new director this year too. The only reason Three Lakes has Vase, because it will move to one of the new high schools. They both will move to one of the new high schools next year. Because it was the only one that really had the space for parking, for school buses, for moving all of the artwork through. So, that was the only reason those two campuses were chosen this year. But we want to use it as an opportunity to show off the incredible facilities that we will have in the future and move them to the two new high schools.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is competitive academics update.
Big push with competitive academics here over the last few years that aligns with some of our district goals and trying to improve our advanced academics. This is, they're directly correlated, and we've done a pretty good job of that. You know, everybody needs an opportunity to compete. Everywhere from, you know, folks showing animals at ag shows. That's a big thing that we, that we certainly champion here as well. To the, to the, to the ones that maybe don't go compete physically in athletics or the performing arts. We do have students that are incredible competitors when it comes to advanced academics. And Mr. Brown's here to give us the mid-year update, which is pretty much a preview of what's going to happen this spring.
It certainly is. Board President Washman, Dr. Crawford, and board members, I appreciate the opportunity to share some information. And as Dr. Crawford mentioned, this is really going to be a preview. A lot of the legwork is done in preparation from the coaches and the scheduling and the planning for competitions that are, that are beginning to occur literally this month moving forward. So, that's most of what our presentation will, will focus on. But the purpose, very similar to the art competitions and athletic competitions, is really to give students an opportunity to be part of a team, to build self-esteem and confidence, to focus on things, to focus on strengths, and then to have that opportunity to excel in something, where they see that hard work pay off. And so, there are a lot of examples of that, beginning all the way down in the elementary schools. The divisions that we, that we have, and this is statewide, and Tyler participates in all of the events that are offered at the elementary level. There are twelve different and unique events. I've just listed a few of these here. The list is really, really long, and it gets longer as you move up the scale. But you can see that there's a good cross-section. Math, science, reading, writing, listening, dictionary skills. Then, you move up to the middle school level, you add some more events. You can see some things, some speaking and listening or reading, writing, writing, even music memory here. And it continues to expand at the high school level, where there are twenty-five competitive events for students to be able to participate. And I just listed a few of those there. Certainly not all of them, but you can see the accounting. Some of them are advanced subject matter, computer science. I will mention Congress debate. We're really not going to talk about results. This actually came in after this was submitted. But this past weekend, we had two students from Robert E. Lee High School compete at the UIL State Congressional Meet, with one advancing to the finals at the State Capitol and finished fourth in the state. So, that's going to be part of the summary report that'll come later, and that just literally happened this past weekend. But as we look ahead into these spring competitions, there certainly is the UIL component of competitive academics that focuses on the core academic subjects. But we also have a very wide variety of current technical student organizations that have a lot of applicable skills that are going on. And we've got students, I'll give you another example, the Future Business Leaders of America chapter from John Tyler just competed yesterday and had several first-place winners that'll be advancing from that. So, that'll be part of that summary report as well. But as you look at the calendar, you can see January, as we move into February, this is when things really start picking up. The week we returned from the holiday break, we held the four-through-eight robotics competition at Caldwell Elementary. Followed that up a week ago, this past Thursday, with the one-through-three robotics competition. You see that UIL State Congress Meet. That's where I said we just had the two students advance and the one finished fourth in the state. One in particular, and I really, I wanted to highlight the UIL academic meets. We have hundreds of students competing at each of these levels. This first round will take place next Saturday, I believe that's, yes, Saturday week. And we have two separate elementary academic meets. So, half of the elementary students in schools will compete at Caldwell Elementary, and the other half will compete at Rice Elementary, with the top performers advancing to a district-level citywide meet that takes place the following month. And then, you can see as we continue into February and March, this is where we, once again, current technical student organizations, I won't read those to you, but a lot of competitions at the district regional level. Then ultimately, students having an opportunity to advance the state. This is where we bring in our middle school, UIL academic meet that's going to be held at Beltran Middle School this year. All five middle schools will have students participating in some of the events that I mentioned previously. This is the, in March, the following month after the meet, that's going to be held on February 1. That's where we bring the top performers together at the Current Technology Center and have the citywide championship for elementary UIL academics. Last year was the first year that it was split into two, coming together as a single meet. It was a great success. The students had a tremendous time. This is the top elementary competitors in those grades competing against each other from across the, across the district. Then, as we finish up the month, month of March, this is where we get into our comprehensive high schools competing at the high school level. So, the six-A district meet, eleven-six A will be held at Mesquite High School. So, this will be our Robert E. Lee High School competitors. Our five-A, sixteen-five-A district meet will be held at White House High School, so here locally. And this year, for the first time, we will have some early college high school students that are in this particular district, and they'll be competing. So, they've got a handful of students that'll have an opportunity to advance. Then, as we get past those district meets, it's a little bit different because there's individual components in these competitions as well as team. Most of the UIL academic events are, have a team component, where the top-placed team at district advances all competitors to the next round, to regionals. But then, of course, the top three placed individually get to advance. So, place one, two, and three in all twenty-five of the high school events. So, the six-A, this will be the Robert E. Lee High School students that advance to Region Two will go to Baylor University in the middle of April. And at that same time, the students from early college high school and John Tyler High School that advance will go to their Region Two meet at Prosper High School. And then, of course, from there, it's that same formula. Top three advancing to state with top-placing team will go to UIL State meets in May. And that's where we're headed with this.
We didn't talk about, and this is in Sandy's shop, remember, we're pretty dang good at one-act play also.
Yes.
Both high schools. So, that keeps getting better. Speech and debate, incredible. In fact, it's such a good one under Sheldon McGowan. He now teaches for us, he works for us. We're so proud of Sheldon. But I want to commend Mr. Brown. That guy's got some energy and some definite, definite expertise, and he really likes what he does. So, that guy gets it. So, we got the right guy in that position in order to get everything to the apex of having successful student outcomes to where eventually we have nineteen of twenty-six.
That's right.
Advanced placement exams, we outperform our peers, both private, charter, and public in nineteen. This all leads into that. So.
Every bit of it does.
Don't ever fail an opportunity to mention that in a public setting.
Yeah, what was that, what was that again?
Nineteen out of twenty-six advanced placement exams, we outperform our peers, charter, public, and private across the state. There you go, all right.
See a lot of opportunities for a lot of kids to perform and grow from performance and compete and grow from competition.
Absolutely. I would add one thing I left out, and I'd be remiss not to mention it. But one thing that is unique about this, our classroom teachers are the coaches at every level. And so, they, they spend a lot of extra time, energy, and effort in taking these students, working after school, working on weekends, and prepping them for these meets. And that's one thing that's a little bit unique about UIL academics.
They love it.
They love it. Math teachers, science teachers, English teachers, working with these kids.
Mr. Brown, since Mr. Washman and Mr. Sterling bragged about what they won and participated in in middle school, mine was high school, poetry, and debate.
Very good.
Imagine that.
You never forget it. Well, anybody else have any questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank everybody for those updates. Moving on to business, legal, finance consent agenda. We have free right here, the budget gifts and donations and local policy. I'm sure we will pull gifts and donations and talk about those. Do I have a motion to, to approve items A and C?
I still move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those motions carry. And now, we'll get to talk about gifts and donations.
You should just have me on recorder talking about the great support that we get from our community for our, for our campuses, especially for the programs that are, that exist outside of our normal budgetary expenditures. Tonight, we have the Tyler ISD Foundation, who's here to provide an opportunity for the board action to accept the Grants for Great Ideas amount of eight, eighty, excuse me, eighty thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. We have Chair Adam Morrow here today on behalf of the foundation to present y'all with a big check and a photo op, along with Executive Director Betsy Jones. And Adam and Betsy, the foundation is operating in an extremely high, incredible level. And thank y'all for what you've done for our school system.
Well, thank you guys very much. And we just want to say thank you also for your service and leadership. Here in January, School Board Appreciation Month, we are so grateful. There's never been a better time to be a part of TISD, and I think you guys are a very large portion of that. So, thank you for your service. And then, on behalf of the Tyler ISD Foundation, we would like to give you guys this check for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Grants for Great Ideas. The innovative and creative ideas from the educators were wonderful this year, and we cannot wait to see these grants in action. So, thank you guys very much.
Yeah, we'll take a picture down there. Adam, last time I saw you in a public setting, you were doing something else at the parade with a shovel. There you go. So, you're here to present a, present a check for us. So. Yeah, I know you have. So, board, please take a picture and enjoy that. Thank you all, foundation.
Okay, we're so thankful for the Tyler ISD Foundation, everything y'all do. But not to be overshadowed, Three Lakes PTA also raised seventeen thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Yeah, we have Alicia Eckert here representing them. She's got all of her Gator gear on tonight. Game day. Okay, there you go. So, thanks so much to Three Lakes PTA for providing that opportunity for funds that the district, you know, normally doesn't provide for some special activities and experiences for our kids and our teachers. So, thank y'all so much for that. Again, seventeen thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars, twenty-five cents is an incredible contribution.
It is.
I feel like, you know, over the years, every meeting we do this, and it never gets old. But I also feel like there's growing momentum from the public to support our kids. And I feel that in a very real sense, and I'm proud of it. And thank you for, both of y'all, for everything you do and all the money that teachers and kids get to take advantage of. Any other questions or comments or anything? Okay. Moving on to the curriculum consent. Oh, we need to accept, y'all want to accept that?
I move we accept the donations.
Oh, good call. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll accept the donation. Motion carries. Thanks, Andy. Okay, now we can move on. Okay, we're going to talk, I guess, about that district calendar, item A.
And B.
A and B. Okay.
Y'all need to pull both of those. I don't know what y'all want to do on the other two.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to move to approve C and D.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Those two carried, the motion carries. And so, we have items A and B. That's district calendar for the twenty-twenty-one year for the district and Wayne Boshears. What you got?
Board, let's go over these calendars. I'll, I'll talk about the administration's recommendation here shortly. But since we provided the first reading to you last week, we have received feedback across the district from teachers mainly, some, some community members, with, with a certain preference towards one of these calendars. Remember, the, the decision to be made tonight and a recommendation that's going to come forth is a difference between a one-hundred-seventy-six-day calendar and one-hundred-and-eighty. The difference between there is one-hundred-and-eighty days actually allows you to access additional dollars in support of other programs. Since that time, we've delved deeper into the requirements and logistics of how you receive that funding. And we'll go over that. And it was kind of comical. We did get one, we did get one comment that said that, "Well, the only reason y'all are wanting to do a one-hundred-and-eighty-day calendar is receive additional dollars for all the summer programming." Yes. Exactly. So, it was almost, it was a criticism from one of our own staff members in regard to that. But, you know, you know, districts across the state are looking, trying to look for different ways to do that. I mean, our friends to the east of us are going completely charter in some ways to do that. But this year, we're going to recommend we stick with the one-seventy-six because of some of the cumbersome logistics as far as the grant access goes. We can't just have a, a large operational, one, you know, one come one day, one come another. It's got to be a very prescriptive, almost compulsory type of opportunity for those students. So, we're going to let this sit for a year. And as, as it evolves, it might, could be something that we do consider in the next calendar. But we're going to recommend tonight that we go with the traditional one-seventy-six. Y'all are more than welcome to take action on your preference on that now that you know exactly what's going on there. But one-eighty is still an option for the board tonight to consider. And while I have a certain preference to go one-eighty, that is not going to be my recommendation. I'm going to go ahead and go with what the staff would like to see in regard to a calendar. And it lets us evolve and get a little bit better understanding about exactly what the state wants us to do as far as summer programming does. I don't want us to be the test case on this thing and be a miserable failure on the back end. I want to see if this thing works before we bring a one-hundred-and-eighty-day calendar to you for recommendation. So, you're more than welcome to tell me, "No, go forth, do a one-hundred-and-eighty days," and we will make the very best of it. But right now, that's, we're going to kind of go with the one-seventy-six as far as our recommendation goes. Feel free to debate that. If you want to talk about specific dates of the calendar, it's pretty tight. Both calendars do end instruction before Memorial Day. Is that correct, Mr. Jones? There's some professional development, differentiation between both calendars. We won't really go into that. There's a different start date for both calendars. One, you actually start the Monday, the first week of school. The other one, you actually get a couple of workdays prior to the first day of school, which will be a start of Wednesday. Teachers typically like that three-day opening week. Everybody understands why. So, everything's pretty, pretty standard here. You get one week at Thanksgiving, one week at spring break, two weeks at Christmas, sixteen days of Christmas, counting the weekends. And then, there's a, there's a, there's a one day, I guess, after the weekend, coming back onto the one-hundred-seventy-six-day calendar to where they actually have a workday before the second semester starts. Those are some of your highlights. Feel free to ask questions about either one of those calendars as we go forward.
Do we know the magnitude of the funding that we're going to miss out on?
Yeah.
Is it competitive or is it guaranteed?
Tasha. Yeah, based on average daily attendance. And if they don't come every day, then that's, that's the risk that you run. But if you had seven-hundred-and-fifty students come. But if you had 750 students come every day for 30 days, it's worth $570,000. Yeah. So, it's basically $760 per student for the 30 days if they come every day. Our attendance rate, according to Rose City Summer Camps, is not, we're not going to hit that number. We possibly could, open up a different site with a different program at Bolter, but as far as the data that we have right now, that, we won't hit that number. Some other things, you have to keep attendance, and those children have to be on a separate track in order to receive funding. Tasha, I guess that means separate track, a separate instructional setting? Or what does that mean when it says? So, in other words, to be prescriptive, saying you are the one, Tasha Bjork would be the one that we're counting on you to go every day, we're going to keep attendance on you. Right. Right. Two hours of direct instruction needed per day. And while we do get that normally and typically on each day of Rose City Summer Camps, that is not an always and everyday thing as well. So, we would have to adjust.
So, your recommendation is the 176-day calendar?
Yep. It is. And again, personally, I'd rather go for the 180. But I think listening to the staff, and I do have some concerns about some of the rules that are coming out of Austin of us being able to make a promise on this end and not be able to fulfill that promise on the back end.
Okay. I think it's wise, if you have hesitation, you know, to explore it more throughout the year and keep it, keep it in our sights, you know, if it is something we do want to pursue eventually. But if you think we might be putting the cart a little ahead of the horse potentially as far as not knowing how it's going to play out, to the point of possibly failing, we don't want that. I don't want that. So, you know, I'm okay with the 176 calendar as long as we're thinking about ways to, you know.
Yes, sir. And there may be, maybe an easy way to do this. We may have to relinquish our quest to be done with instruction by Memorial Day. We've had school years where we didn't do that. And so, if we have to come back another week in order to access these dollars, then that might be something we need to really consider as well. You know, the local economy and the, I guess, the chamber and the travel and tourism industry probably doesn't want to hear that, but trying to look for a competitive advantage that's there. We just need some time to maybe manipulate the calendar a little bit more to be able to access the funding. And we're going to have a legislative session between now and the next time. That's going to be something we need to take, consider as well. Now, we'll adopt a calendar while they're in session, but we'll know by this time next year, at least next spring, maybe not January, whether or not they're going to be able to continue some of these innovative funding. It's a big deal for the commissioner. He sent out a survey last week in regard to this model. We are very interested, but there are some constraints that are statutory that need to be adjusted to make this a little bit, or at least some rules from TA that make this a little bit more attainable for school systems. The 180-day calendar requirement was a surprise, and I don't know why did they even put that in there? Do we know? I think that was one of the statutory things that surprised even the agency saying that that happened. And so, they, you know, if we weren't really watching what was going on when they were writing these bills, it wound up hindering a lot of school systems, I think, to go do that. So, maybe that's something we can adjust. It's an easy tweak if it is statutory. Or rulemaking, I'm sorry, TA rulemaking.
Are you ready for a motion?
I have a comment first. You said earlier tonight that kids' behavior, kids' outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. I know we all believe that's true. Learned that in our training, we've seen that in our life. I've been a consistent advocate for summer school since I got on the board. For a district with 75% free and reduced lunch to only have six, 700 kids at the elementary and middle school level, taking advantage of summer is one of the reasons why we're not where we need to be academically. So, I understand the input of staff. I understand why this is difficult, and I certainly don't want the district to pursue something that is legislatively so cumbersome that it ends up not being good for kids. But $500,000 is a ton of money. And that's always been the principal constraint for us for summer school was funding. So, I think it's unfortunate if we say no to that funding and, more importantly, go another year with only a fraction of the kids who need summer enrichment and summer direct instruction without having it.
Rojo, when's the last time, Mr. Jones, excuse me, pretty folksy calling you Rojo, when do we need to get the calendar adopted? Yeah. But we've had it later. So, one option for the board is a table if you'd like.
Why would we table?
I'm just putting it out there. After listening to Reverend Hager's comments and some of your, looking at some of your faces. If we need to go back and maybe survey staff or talk to more staff, we can certainly do that.
I think staff is going to probably tell you still 176. My question would be when Mr. Reverend Hager spoke of summer school. You know, I've always asked a question several times, actually lately. Is our summer school the intense summer school, at least two hours of it that we need to have so that our students can grow academically at a higher level? I don't think adding one or two more days to this calendar is going to help it. I believe we need to look at what we do during our summer school that we have approved.
So, the data, the data says that our kids are not growing, but they're not slipping. And that is a big win as well, to be honest with you.
They're not growing, but they're not slipping.
Correct. They're maintaining. Whereas they, when they leave at a certain grade level, there's maintenance during the summer. That is certainly a better alternative than not having that as well. I understand your growth.
And you know what I'm going to say? I'd like to see us grow.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. But we're not, I'm being honest with you, right now on the research, the data that's coming back to us is that it's not a growth. It is not, it's just not a slip.
Maybe, maybe what you can do is look at the summer program and in areas where there are greater needs for students, whatever the area may be, math, science, whatever, that we could work more intense hours during the day for those students. It is an all-day program, right?
It is.
Okay. Just something to consider.
Sure.
As you look at the design of their summer program.
It's an all-day program.
I know it's a lot of activities.
Half of it's camp, half of it's instruction. Yeah.
The compulsory attendance, I mean, make sure I understand this, they have to be present so many days during the summer consecutively?
Yeah, it is not compulsory.
I mean, it's not compulsory.
But the way the rules are arranged to make it work is one of those deals where they need to attend every day. And I think if you look at Rose City Summer Camps, that is not occurring. And so, there's a little bit of hit and miss there, and there's no, really no, there's no stick, for lack of a better term.
To make them come.
But there's no penalty for not sending your kid to a normal school year. You'd have, you have penalties for not, you know, now those penalties have been really relaxed as well since you were a principal and I was a principal. But no, sir, there is not a requirement to go, but it's arranged to where you only get credit for if they actually attend. Now, we do talk about, we need to make the experience so great that the kids want to go. I think that's occurring, but you still have other times during the summer when we know it's not compulsory for kids to go to attend, and their parents may take a three or four-day weekend here and there, even if, even if they are economically challenged. So, it is, it is a, it is a big challenge. We have a great partnership with Mentoring Alliance and Rose City Summer Camps. We need to figure out a way how to maximize this, and right now, I don't have a solution for that. But hear y'all loud and clear.
Dr. Crawford, it is a delicate balance here because we are talking about summer, and there's kids and families from, from every spectrum and what they, what they do in the summer, what they think summer's for. Some of them just need a place to put their kids. Some of them, you know, their kids need a break. And I think there is diminishing returns at some point. It can't just be, you know, more instruction, more instruction, more instruction, because I think you're going to lose a lot of kids. So, Rose City Summer Camps is something we're doing right. They do try to make it fun. They do try to, you know, not get us too bogged down, but they, but we are able to pull, put our teachers in there and do. So, I, usually I am a, just go for it. But in this case, it just seems like we need to really get a better understanding for what we're doing and not ruin something that's good possibly, not that we would ruin it, but let's take what's good, see what we can build on without burning kids out in the summer with compulsory attendance and that kind of stuff.
Well, I commend staff. We've tried to turn this thing upside down. We've talked to people, we've called people. TA is a little tardy on getting, again, the survey just came out when, Dr. Hanson? Yesterday? Or Tuesday? So, I commend us for looking at this. When the statute came out, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting. So, and Tasha, I think you just, you found some, this was today, just as recently as today, and I was already having a little bit of anxiety about it, and then that kind of confirmed some things. So, we'll continue to look and see if it's an option for us. Again, y'all have a choice here. I think the agenda item says, Mr. Jones put the agenda items together and it said, the board make a decision. I didn't even think we had a recommendation on the agenda item because we needed to have this conversation tonight in regard to that. So, I hear y'all in what our needs are, and we'll certainly continue to strive to do that. I wish there would be some relaxation of a couple of the rules, and maybe that's something that the commissioner needs to get some feedback on so that can happen.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the 176-day 2020-2021 calendar.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. The ayes have it. Motion passes for the 176-day calendar. Good conversation, and let's do, keep our eye on what we can be doing in the summer. And thank you for, Fritz, for your honesty and hesitation, and I appreciate that. Okay. Now, we have the Boashears' calendar.
Boashear's calendar, very similar in regard to their typical calendar for the year. No changes there of significance, from my understanding. Dr. Hanson, along with any SIO that has any, anything to add in regard to that. Okay. What a neat program we've got over there to be able to serve kids throughout the year and their families. Special opportunity there. One thing everyone needs to circle, well, they don't have it on here. I was going to say their graduation date. We'll get that to y'all for this summer. Staff, y'all, y'all that are in here, you better be there. Is it there?
July 16th.
July 16th of 2021, you better be there. Put it on your calendars right now.
It was a great day.
That's right. Is that this one? Next year's. Okay, good deal. Go back and find out when the graduation is for this year as well. So, what a neat deal.
I move we approve the Boashears' calendar.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Which one did you approve?
There was only one for Boashears, correct?
There's two.
176.
So, which one did you, which was your motion?
176-day calendar.
What was the motion for?
To clarify the motion.
176-day.
All right. Then I'll say aye.
Okay. So, the motion carries to approve the 176-day Boashears' calendar. Okay. Okay. Moving on to the superintendent staff reports for the construction update. Mr. Loper?
Thank you, President Washman, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Crawford. Actually, Ms. Jones and Mr. Beddingfield don't need any introduction, but I do need to tell you what you won't see in this report. And it was a discussion I had with Dr. Nations, I know she's not here right now, at the board recognition, and she is asking me about the construction projects and how they were going. And her response was, that is so good to know. So, you guys need to know as a whole board what we discussed. They don't know I'm doing this, but I was actually bragging on these two, and I told Dr. Nations, you should feel good, and we should all feel good at the hands that we are in with Mrs. Jones and Mr. Beddingfield. Having been involved with them for three years now, since we did first design, and the level of commitment, the level of accountability that I see daily that they hold our contractors, our architects, our engineers, sometimes our own staff. From moving product, from moving campuses that we've all recently done and did here at John Tyler, and the mitigation of all of the things that arise and come up, and most importantly, we're in good hands because they treat the dollars we've been entrusted in by the taxpayers like it was their own. So, having said that, we're going to have a video, a couple of drone videos. I think Robert E. Lee's up first. At the end, there'll be about four slides at each one because the videos were done a month and a half ago before we went on break, and a lot changed since then. So, just some update. Ms. Jones?
Hello, everyone. My name is Cherie Jones. I work for the Tyler ISD Facility Services Department. I am a construction project manager, and I am overseeing the new Robert E. Lee High School project. Today, I'm just very happy to update you on a new progress update report for Robert E. Lee High School. Let's begin by taking a look at the exterior of the campus. The columns located at the front entrance are installed and beginning to take shape to give the campus a collegiate, traditional style. As you enter the campus through the main entrance, the main office is to your right. A secure vestibule has been created for parents, visitors, and staff to check in or access the building through the court leader system. Take a look at the details of the ceiling at the entrance, as you see the Callford ceilings. Once you are given access and enter Lee, you will notice the railings are installed on the main stairwell and second story. Today, we are going to focus on the art wing and its features. Down the hallway, there are two art classrooms and two art studios that include a separate kiln, matting, and portfolio rooms. The art studios have access to the courtyard so students are able to work in a secure area outdoors. Across the courtyard from the art wing is the school's media center. We will look at the media center in another episode as its completion gets closer. This concludes this construction update. I want to take the opportunity to thank our taxpayers for support of this construction fund package. Thank you.
Just like to thank Dr. Crawford and board members for giving us an opportunity to give you an update. It's always a pleasure to do that. Like to share a few current pictures with you. I actually took these pictures this week. This is our main entrance, and it's actually the first time you get a chance to see all of the columns completed. And this is our academic building. As you walk into the academic building, this is the main entrance. Never really get a chance to see the back view facing the media center, looking towards the exit of the academic building. Lots of detail there. Here, we actually have an areas A and B, which is more or less the east portion of our academic building. You see carpet. You see carpet, also wallpaper, some light fixtures, ceiling treatments of that rulon wood finish, just really beautiful. And as we go forward, we also have our media center. And those are just some current pictures of where we're at today. And also just would like to give you an update on our construction certificate program. Just wanted to thank TISD Foundation for giving us the opportunity to continue the construction certificate program for the 2020-2021 school year. It's just a great feeling to be able to work with the kids and to talk to them about careers in construction, for them to get a chance to get out to the job sites, as well as provide scholarships. Are there any questions at this time?
Been some updates since we were last in the building, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
It's great.
Every presentation generally includes the words "on schedule" and "within budget." Is this one as well?
Yes, just to give you an update on where we're going, we'll be starting our renovation of the competition gym after basketball season. Demo starts first part of June of the existing campus. We are on schedule, within budget for August 2020, opening the school for the academic building.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We really like on time, under budget.
Under budget when they're done, within budget. Yeah.
Hello, Brady Beddingfield here with Tyler ISD, the construction project manager here at the John Tyler High School project. And today, we're going to do an update on our construction progress here at John Tyler. As you take a look at the front exterior of the campus, you can see that the brickwork and the windows are complete from the new performing arts center at the far left corner of the new main front entry and the gym entry to the right. Through these windows on the front of the school include science labs, special education rooms, and career and technology classrooms. We are pleased to say that this completed entry will now be used as the main entry to the John Tyler campus. The front parking area will also be completed and available for student parking, as well as faculty, staff, and visitors to use. The main entrance vestibule has all of the safety features seen at our other campuses. There's a check-in area at the main office. Once the check-in process is complete, visitors are given access to the campus. A large line mural will greet all who enter this doorway. Career and Technology Education Labs are visible upstairs. Down the hallway are large CTE classrooms, as well as a teacher workroom. As we begin the next steps on the John Tyler construction project, we will see the following changes. The students and staff will vacate the existing seat in D Hall and the Votech Building, which will undergo major renovations. The Fieldhouse Annex and JROTC Building will be demolished in preparation for the new indoor athletic complex. And work in the fine arts portion of the new building will continue to progress towards completion in August of 2020. Thank you again for joining us for another construction project update here at the John Tyler campus. As we move to the next phase, we'll be issuing a new update. So please stay tuned. I'd like to say again, thank you again to our community for your support and your commitment to Tyler ISD and making the John Tyler project happen. Thank you again.
Good evening, board. Thank you again for this opportunity to provide you with an update. It's amazing, just me actually sitting here at this table, watching that video and consuming what has taken place just over the last month. It's been amazing. So you'll see a couple of photo updates. As you know, students and staff occupied the new administration and academic wing January 6th. It was a day that it was almost like a dream come true. I got to stand in the lobby as the students and the staff were coming in the building. And just watching them in amazement was really a dream come true. So it was a pretty special experience. But here's a couple of photos. So this is the new entryway, obviously, to the new building up front. You can see the line in the middle. It's a pretty awesome feature. This is a view down the hallway. To the right are restrooms, science labs. This is actually on the second floor, nice shiny floor. This is a view of the main lobby of the new building. Down below, you can see student seating and a gathering space. On the backside of there, right under the blue line, is the connection piece to the existing campus. In the future phases, that will be a set of stairs that actually go down into the media center that's on the lower level. And a pretty cool view from night with the blue line lit up at the front. Photo credit by Mr. Loper. And that concludes that. Any questions?
I have a couple. On the John Tyler High School, I noticed the first picture showed the name standing out much more. And I passed by, you can barely see the name. Is that going to remain like that?
It will. It's exactly as you see it in the photo. One thing that will change actually is out at the loop, if you could, I'm not sure if this laser pointer will work here, but out at the loop anyways, there will be a marquee sign that will be lit at night. It'll also have John Tyler High School out front, which will be, if you know where the planting flower bed is directly out front, it'll be up near the loop with illuminated signage that will help.
Can you go back to the very first picture that you showed?
Sure.
That is how I thought the name was going to look.
Okay. Expecting a darker color?
Yes, sir. Because that's what we saw earlier.
Yeah, I believe that's silver. Actually, it blends with all the storefront and the line as well.
Yeah. And we need to caution the public that renderings are renderings. And so, and of course, when the sun's as bright as it is right there, I think you're going to get a little bit of that blending in there as well. So you're not going to be able to see it from the loop?
No.
Both of them. I mean, both of them did not project like they did in the renderings whenever you, I think Lee even had black letters at one time, or it was colored in or something. So it's more of the same color, it's just compressed inside of the actual stone. So we're still pretty proud of these as well, Reverend Mason.
Well, that was the question. Now the compliment we have to ask. Now I want to compliment both of you for your steadfastness in your job and as we have gone through the buildings to see the progress that has been made at both high schools. And I too hope the community is very proud of what they voted for. And I know the students are proud at John Tyler. And I can't wait to see what the rest of the building would look like as you move toward the back. I assume you're moving toward the back. Is that right?
That's correct. Just, yeah, as a reminder, this is really only about a third of the projects. We've got a long ways to go between now and August 2021.
And I've explained to the citizens who asked me that because the building is remaining in that same location, it's a more difficult task. And yet, when you see the building, you're looking at a beautiful building. To me, they resemble a college in some ways. And then they also resemble a business atmosphere in other ways. So I want to thank both of you. And then especially, do we want to show our appreciation to the citizens who voted for us to have these two new high schools.
Absolutely.
So thank you both.
Thank you.
You know, yes. New construction takes a long time. Remember, we were wondering why we were getting, having to get going at JT where we're here. The great thing about the renovation is, is we connect the renovate the older, the original building to this new one is, is that the steel structure, the concrete, it's already there. We don't have to do the new construction. And so in saying that, the renovation piece of this will, I don't want to say flyby, but it certainly won't take as long as what this did because we had to start from the very ground up to go here. So it's going to be exciting. I guess August of 21, we'll wind up having the, pretty much everything renovated on the inside when we start school. We'll have, we'll have some nice facilities even this year, August of 20, with the fine arts facilities, I guess energized. Is that correct?
That is correct.
As well as C and D?
That is correct.
So what's being renovated right now, we'll actually see students inside of the new facility as it started to tie into the newer building. So we're not going to have to wait as long to get going because we're not having to put new sewer lines and bring all the utilities to the newer part of the building. They're already there and they're ready to go.
And one other point you made at John Tyler is that the gymnasium, you're going to, I don't quote, what is the term you use?
We said reskin it.
Reskin it, all right.
So we'll, yeah, so the public knows, all of this new brick here that matches, I mean, it, the original brick on that gym will be removed. And we'll actually take all the flashing down, that blue flashing and the gutter work that's there, take all that down, put new systems in place, and actually tie, use the same color brick system here to give it a new skin. So it'll all be tied together. We'll actually repurpose the entrance to the gym as well. You won't go through that original door. That'll actually be bricked in now to where we'll actually use the vestibule where the new ticket booth is located as well. So.
That's correct.
And in the gym, did we decide to refinish the floor or are we replacing the floor?
All new floors, all gyms.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll go ahead and. So we will be bringing a spring bid package to y'all in regard to that. And I don't know if I'm supposed to even talk about that tonight. Tim? No, for other facilities there as well. Okay. So spring bid package to talk about taking board action because we've been able to manage our finance as well during this project for the consideration of athletic facilities, making sure we have lights on our baseball, softball fields, along with our tennis courts. I know that's been a little bit of a concern out there. But you got to think a superintendent that values athletics that way. We can't be stuck in the 1960s and 70s like we've been all the way up until we started this project. We're going to get our stuff lit so that our kids don't have to cut baseball practice short at 5:30 in the evening until daylight savings hits. So we're going to take care of all of our programs and have facilities y'all could be proud of academically and athletically.
And Reverend Hager, to your point, we are within budget and on time.
One comment I know I don't have to make, but these are such nice, incredible facilities. Is there anything we need to do on the campus itself to the superintendent to make sure that we keep these as nice as we can? I know we've had so many campuses roll out over the last 15, 20 years, and most of them did a good job. A few I've kind of sensed weren't prepared for the way kids are sometimes, some kids, very few. But is there anything we need to do, being proactive, to make sure that all the staff is trained in what we expect on keeping these?
Yeah, you know, our facilities are our front porch. And certainly, that's important. And conveying that to the principal leadership on those campuses, to custodial services, to facility services is something we've really worked hard upon. As we grow into these facilities and we have more square footage, we are going to have to add custodians at both locations. We've been able to upgrade the equipment that are inside of here to take care of the floors, et cetera, the right examinees to make sure that the floors are kept up. That's been some of the standard that we've had at some of our other campuses to make sure that they do have the tools and the resources for the folks that take care of that. Not to mention a constant reminder to our staff that we don't want to junk up these buildings. We want to stay with impeccable tastes. We've got brand-new furniture in here. We don't need to go to yard sales to bring in these secondhand Walmart-esque shelving of the particle board that's falling apart and leaning. We've had to put screws on the top of it, and then we go in and we staple some type of curtain to it. That's just not acceptable. So you can't argue with high expectations. Somebody challenge me on it. I dare you. We're going to have high expectations on these brand-new campuses. These are flagship schools. And I want to make sure that we take care of them. We're going to do that very well.
To add on to what Mr. Burkhild is saying, I believe it's students taking pride, as well as the faculty and staff taking pride. Now, at elementary level, if you walk around, at least we're used to, you see a piece of paper, you pick it up. We want to make sure that they have that same pride and desire to do the same thing at both our high schools.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you for saying that from the dice.
Shouldn't see paper.
Absolutely, thank you.
Gun paper wrappers. We just shouldn't.
So look out there at that camera and say it.
We just shouldn't.
There you go. There's no doubt about that. We've got to do that. And, you know, six years ago, when a new superintendent got here, we did tours of these campuses, we pointed things out. There's going to be a renewed energy on that. There's no doubt about it with these facilities here. We've lived too long in Tyler, Texas, with the condition of our facility. Need to take care of them then. We still need to take care of them now. These have been gifted to us by the taxpayers here. And we need to take care of them. And y'all making that statement is going to really help us enforce and reinforce our expectations.
Well, then let me make one more. We have beautiful glass in these buildings. Students nor staff should be leaning against the glass. And I say that because we saw that the other day.
Okay. No fingerprints or thumbprints or handprints. Mr. Jones? Let's make sure we convey that. Let's take care of these buildings. Hey, you know what? It's all part of instruction. It really is. Because you're not going to, when you go into a work environment, you're not going to just run up to a glass and just put your hands out there and say, "Oh, my gosh, what's going on out there?" Who does that? You're right, Reverend Mason.
Well, we saw it the other day.
Yes, ma'am, we did. We're going to work on that and understand that we need to have pride in these facilities from day one. And we're working on it. Yes, ma'am. Had a meeting about it yesterday.
One more and I'm finished. The punch list. I know we're used to this from previous projects. We stand on top of the punch list, Tim and project managers?
Yes, ma'am. I can assure you, we get weekly updates on punch list activities. And we're constantly updating those as issues arise. Either they're termed as warranty items or punch list items, and we're actively working on those every day, literally.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Great updates. And we do have an open house coming up for John Tyler High School, the 28th, right? That's a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
And what time does it start?
4:30, I believe, right? Ms. Holmes?
There's a 4:30 brick unveiling. Okay. 5:00 to 6:30, January 28th.
4:30 Tyler ISD Foundation.
Okay.
Brick ceremony for those that purchase bricks.
That's exciting.
5 o'clock inside the building.
All right.
Ms. Eckert, as soon as I go off the board, I'm looking forward to working with Tyler Proud for our next, our next bond, whenever that is.
Okay.
First volunteer, is it?
All right. Thank you, both of y'all. Y'all are doing an incredible job.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
We have just a discussion over a couple of first readings for local policies.
Yes, sir. In your book, you have Tasby Update 114, the long-awaited 114, that's finally available to us almost a year later, at least nine months after the legislative session's been complete. So we're glad to have those policies as reviewed and written by Tasby. We have made some adjustments in there in regard to some of the recommendations that they had towards our local policy that y'all were pretty adamant about. So we've got those in there for you. Please review those. If you have any questions in regard to, A, as far as the local policies, along with legal, feel free to call. If you, I can't do anything about legal. That's backed by statute and the lawyers for the legislature. But as far as local policies go, we do have authority to adjust those. And we also have local policies BE and BED on the first reading. Those are the ones that were pulled out and tweaked that could not be included in 114. It's the public participation. So in other words, we had to go back and actually revert away from what Tasby was recommending to meet y'all's expectations for it to be a little bit more transparent and open.
Well, just like tonight, you know, so enjoyable hearing everybody talk to us.
Can we do a welfare check for one of our normal speakers? It's been a few months.
We'll have somebody work on that.
All right. All right, moving on to future business.
You have an address for me on that, Mr. Burkhfield?
I know exactly.
Okay. All right, we got future business. We got a board workshop, February 6th, regular meeting, February 17th, and then, May 2, May 2nd of 2020, we have school trustee election for single-member districts 2 and 4. And we will call the election at the board workshop. Yes. Okay. Future business is covered, so I'll hear a motion to adjourn. So moved? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Fritz?
Already voted aye.
All right. The meeting is adjourned.